Officers for the Board of Education. The way we traditionally handle this item is I will turn over the gavel. Figure it to our clerk who will preside over this part of discussion. We'll take nominations from the floor and votes. There can be nominations intended for this slate or nominations solo. So at this point, unless there are any questions or comments or thoughts from board members, if not, I am going to turn over the gavel to Mr. President.
Are there any motions for nominations?
I'd like to nominate Dr. Morrison to be Board President and Nancy Kirk to be Board Vice President.
Second motion. Votes now open. All votes are in. Are there any comments? Motion carries. Yes, Mr. President, it's Dr. Morrison and the Vice President, Mrs. Kirk.
Mr. President, ma'am. At this point, I'll get up. See if they see the opinion. You can tell me what I said.
And say that I'm very honored to be in this position and that you all, who I think are wonderful people and have been wonderful to work with for the Board of Education, that you would have me to be a leader in this group. So, thank you very much. So, right now, we will, I'll accept a motion for adoption of the agenda. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Reading vote?
I know you're waiting on me. I apologize. I have no control of my cursor for whatever reason. It's just everywhere. But anyway, I don't favor.
All votes are in. Your question carries.
Okay, our next item, our school highlights. And before Dr. Anderson takes the microphone, I was a bit worried when all the policemen were here and what I'd done wrong. But thank goodness, it's because we're honoring you today.
With that segue, and I think this is, I think it is. So with that segue, there are two pieces. And Mr. Robbins, sir, feel free to add to this piece. You know, often we have folks that ensure that every day that they're here, early in the mornings, late in the evenings, who really are the main people that keep us safe and secure in our buildings. And we take that for granted often, our freedoms and our safety on a day-to-day basis. And we want to take time today.
Dr. Anderson, I don't think your mic.
It's not on?
Your microphone.
We're just keeping you running, Mr. Russo. All right, but I think that one I can, oh, you don't have to do me one. I can actually do that. There we go. But I appreciate that you were good. All right, are we on?
Nope.
Um, you made one. All right. Okay. So, a couple of things. One, at this time of year, we reflect back onto a year that has been a very good school year, my very first year here. And as I stated initially, often we take for granted the many folks that protect our freedoms and our safety, that help us feel safe in going to school every day, and are there when we meet them in time of crisis. We certainly want to take this time to acknowledge our school police department. Mr. Chief Brown, I'm sorry, not Mr., Chief Brown, not only a Highland Park High School graduate, but truly has been just an absolutely amazing leader, exceptional in so many ways. I'm going to talk about why we are acknowledging him today, but just in general, for you all to know, our MOU, which most recently he was featured, as well as Ms. Kelly, in the newspaper. A lot of that work is really from Chief Brown. The conversations about activities in schools and being available for students. But the entire department tirelessly ensures that students, staff, and community members that enter our buildings feel safe and protected. And I cannot thank you enough. With that, we have, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Robbins to make some comments, and then call Chief Brown forward. With that, one of the big pieces, we had a SRO camp. And Mr. Chief Brown will be talking about the camp. And I'll turn it over to him to make comments about that. Before Chief Brown comes up, Mr. Robbins, would you like to make comments about the police department, the SRO camp, or otherwise, sir?
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Yes, I would. I remember, it's been about eight years ago when I joined the district. It was shortly thereafter that Chief Brown, after retiring from the Topeka Police Department, also joined the district. And I can tell you that ever since that point in time, the quality and the performance of our own local law enforcement team has certainly improved by leaps and bounds. And I certainly have appreciated working with Chief Brown and his entire team. This recognition is certainly well-deserved. Not only has he improved the safety and security for our students and staff across the district, not only by their presence, but also with helping us to put together a quality emergency management plan that would keep us also safe in event of some unplanned emergency of some sort. So, Chief Brown, to you and your entire team, I want to tell you, job well done. I certainly appreciate the partnership that you have also been able to forge and keep going with Topeka Police Department. And I tell you, I don't know where we would be as a district from the standpoint of safety and security if it was not for you and your team.
Can we give them an applause? And Chief Brown, can you come up? Congratulations. And if you can introduce your team, and then we ask what you say, because the board would like to take a photo with the entire team, and then talk a little about the SRO camp.
Well, first of all, I'm quite privileged to be the first to say, Mr. President, Adam Vice President, congratulations. And to Mr. Woods, thank you so much for your leadership over the years. It's been tremendous, and we're very thankful to you for that. And your senior members of the administration, thank you for this tremendous opportunity. It truly is a partnership. And I'm very happy to be here with Sergeant Ron Ikis, who is the sergeant in charge of the Topeka police officers who work in our district. Of course, everyone here knows, but maybe not everyone in the audience, we have seven Topeka police officers who work in our district as part of a MOU that we have with the city and provide service in the middle schools. And Ron provides their overall supervision. Of course, Jeremy Laidoff is instrumental in putting together the camp. I'm going to talk to you about him in a second. Charlie McCray, our captain. And then Ron Haller, the institution of SROs. Fifteen years at Robinson, will be retiring later on this year. And it's been an absolute privilege to have him, both when I was in charge of the SROs as a Topeka Police Commander and now with 501. So, the camps originally were run by TPD, and then we became more involved. And I want to call out Jeremy and doing such an amazing job in working with Ron and Ron in providing camps. We had camps this year at French Middle School and at Chase. We had a good number of children at both camps. And I think we would all agree, in this tumultuous time with police relationships, that those relationships with our young people are absolutely key to see police officers in a positive light. And I went, I had the opportunity to go to the camp on a number of occasions, and that's exactly what I saw every time. I saw interaction with those young people, laughing and just having a wonderful time. That carries over into the school year when our officers are in the hallways on a daily basis, working to create positive relationships with children to ensure that as they grow up, they can feel that they trust those officers and can go to them if they have an issue or a concern. And part of our responsibility is to protect them and to provide them an opportunity to ask questions and to answer questions for them so they have a better understanding of law enforcement and what we do. And so with that, we are just very, very privileged and pleased and very thankful, Dr. Anderson, and to the members of the administration and the board for this prestigious honor. Thank you so much.
All right, our board members will come and take a photo with you, so you all come.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. I just got rid of a late public communication. We will have Philip Wrigley come forward. And Mr. Wrigley, before you speak, I need to read you about public communication.
Yes.
Patrons may speak to the board on items of concern to the school district, provided they have completed the intent to address the board card, specifically identifying the subject matter of the concern improperly filed and with the president of the board or the clerk of the board, no later than 6:30. We're making it.
I appreciate that.
There is a cumulative limit. Thirty minutes.
It's not one and three, that's all.
Oh, okay. So, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to address the board. We ask your comments to the board. Be respectful. If you should have a complaint against a specific employee, we ask that you submit your written complaint to the superintendent. If the complaint is against the superintendent, please address your written complaint to either me as Board President or to the clerk of the board. Thank you.
Thank you. No complaints about anyone. My name is Philip Wrigley. I'm a proud Topeka high school teacher, as well as NEA Topeka Executive Board member. And I actually live over in Lawrence at 2525 Stoke Drive. So, I'm speaking on behalf of the association in relation to item 19-1, which is the Kansas-Kan School Redesign Project from KSDE. And Stephanie Harson asked me to just come speak a little about that. I had the pleasure of going to a conference a couple of years ago down at Aporia State about the core propositions that are part of the Kansas-Kan School Redesign Project. And then just three weeks ago, I had the pleasure of hearing Dr. Randy Watson speak passionately about the project over at the EdCamp in Lawrence. Many of the teachers there and everything I've been to were excited about the possibilities and potential of the project. And I'm confident that the association would be glad to support a worthy teacher-led and community-led effort if we choose to be a part of this project as a district. The main concern I want to express, or I guess the thing that I'd like to stress, is not about the possibilities with redesign itself, but about the process if we choose to do it. Commissioner Watson made very clear a few weeks ago, and all the publications made clear about the project, that interested schools and districts had to have a vote of 80% in support from the staff of the schools that are going to be involved, as well as support of the NEA local. And then, of course, we'd also have to have both elementary and secondary schools committed. And what I'd want to stress is that those requirements, based on what he said to me, were not pro forma. It's not just, hey, let's do it and then figure out what school will vote on it. But they are rather evidence that there has been meaningful discussion and that the stakeholders have been the agents in the process, that we've built capacity within the personnel, and that the educators are excited and ready for the chance to create something new. They're key ingredients in the success of this redesign process, not something that should happen after the fact. I know that the deadline for participation is imminent. I believe it's August 1st. And I also know that as of three weeks ago, no districts had yet signed up for it. I don't know if that means they would give us an extension, perhaps, to say, hey, we have some more discussions before we commit. I suspect they would. But I just want to stress that this is an exciting process and a really good possibility, but that I want to make sure that we go through the process of having those discussions, finding out which schools are truly interested in committing to this rather enormous process, and make sure that it's not an external imposition from the district to say, hey, you're going to do this. That it is an organic piece coming out of those teachers, that staff, those families that are there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda? Disposition of business by consent?
Also want to thank my colleagues for their support. Decided that once in a while, I needed to step up and assume some actual responsibility. So, I'm eager to do this for all of us. And my first action is to say, too, I move that the Board of Education approve the items of business by consent as presented and authorizes the Board President or the Superintendent to sign the special project and purchasing contracts for and on behalf of the Board of Education.
Any discussion on the items? We're ready to vote.
Should be open? All votes are in. Motion carries, Uman Wesley.
Next on the agenda would be superintendent's announcements. And I think you will discuss, Mr. Wrigley, just.
Yeah, perfect timing. And so with that, that kind of gives a segue. We have placed board members the information about Kansas-Kan School Redesign at your table. And we placed it there as an informational piece. So, it's under superintendent's update to give you information that there is a Kansas School Redesign. There is a Kansas School Redesign discussion going on. So, you have a sheet that says Kansas-Kan School Redesign. This particular process was announced later in May. And then in June, again, some conversations, workshops. And as has been shared a few weeks ago, some of our teachers attended workshops on this. And some teachers have contacted me to ask if we would be willing to consider looking at Kansas School Redesign. The timing is such that it is the summer. So, involving individuals would be a part of that process in allowing for teachers to make this determination and for principals to make this determination. The reason we have it on the agenda this evening is to make a point of making sure that, one, you receive the information. So, this is the information we received from Commissioner Watson. And at this time, that's really it at this time. What we will do, however, is to make sure that principals know, as have teachers contacted me, that if principals have an interest in communicating with their staff over the course of this month to further explore this, we ask for them to determine their level of participation desire and then continue to explore. And we may be bringing this topic back to you for further conversation. I've had a brief conversation as well with Commissioner Watson, who also shared that some teachers from Topeka have spoken with him and expressed some interest. And again, I shared with him that this ultimately, if there is a principal or principals, if there are teachers that would like to participate in this piece, then it will come to the board, and you all would have further conversation. And what I would like to see is the principal and the teachers to kind of lead that discussion of what this could look like for them. The components, again, within the year, I'll leave it to Ms. Wallace if she wants to add to this piece. At this point, the application is the back part of this page. I'll send you the email from the KSDE website. But ultimately, those first couple of paragraphs that talk about, you know, the Kansas-Kan vision for education, are really looking at a small number of schools that can be redesigned, really led by the principal, teachers from that school, and being able to think innovatively about how you can redesign their school. What I will share in terms of additional financial resources for supplies, resources, staff development, that is not a part of this piece. This is more of a concept in thinking about how you can really approach what's occurring in schools differently than how you're approaching them now. So, it's really a research-based approach. And Mrs. Wallace, any other items that you want to add at this time? And we're still in our early phase of learning more, but we're really turning it over to schools to determine the level of interest as we're over the course of this summer. Any other items you want to add? And we're not proposing that we proceed with this or not, because again, it'll be something that principals and teachers decide. But some teachers have contacted me and asked that we take it up for consideration to allow them to explore.
It is a year of planning for the schools for the redesign. So, it's not, and then an implementation year following. What they are providing are staff supports. So, KSDE is hiring, I believe, two consultants to work with the schools on their redesign planning year to implement the following year.
Are there, oh, and the other piece that I'll mention, which the bullets that says to be considered are down here at the bottom, has to be one elementary, one secondary. And you have to be willing to allow for visitors to your building as part of this piece. And the two staff supports, it's my understanding would be in math and ELLA, but that's just basically my initial understanding at this point. Dr. Mickelson, did you have a question?
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Wrigley. It seems like the timing of this, and as you indicated, the timing is off and that teachers and principals, if they're not here, how are they going to gain a consensus on what that looks like before August 1st?
And I inquired about that, too, in speaking with Commissioner Watson. And he talked about, you know, how, whether it's teachers through surveys or much like teachers have emailed me. So, again, I leave it to the principal and teachers that if this is something they want to explore further. But I do know that some individuals may have contacted, as well, some board members. And if that, given that case as well, I want you to know that we're aware of it. It is a teacher-led and administrator-led process. And quite frankly, I think something like this really has to have full support from the teacher, from the teaching staff. So, I leave it in their arms in terms of further exploring this piece.
Thank you, Mr. Wrigley. And I got a chance to hear Dr. Watson speak about this as well, just this last week at Leadership Kansas. And this came up, certainly, because we have some educators in that group and a couple of administrators and superintendent in that group. They wanted to know well. So, this was really rolled out, I guess, at the tail end of May. One school is already out, and we would have decisions made by August 1st. They were trying to get around to asking him, you know, what's the possibility of an extension or anything like that. And I think in the answer that he gave, the way he described it, is you would not need to have already done all of that by August 1st. What they're asking is that you apply, fill in an application, which really just indicates your interest by August 1st. And after that, you'd be required to have the 80% vote of the educators. They aren't asking for any full turnover of staff or anything like that. And then even resolution by the Board of Education at some point. That part, I was unclear on when that would have to happen. So, I'm not sure. I guess is my real answer. I'm just sharing the fuzzy information that.
I mean, that would make sense. But on the back of the form, they have date of local board approval, date when faculty had 80% approval, and local KNEA or professional organizational support. I mean, so, apply the best.
Yeah, I know. But of course, when they rolled it out, maybe that's a, date-wise, that's kind of.
I agree with you, Dr. Anderson, that it just needs to be principal-led and faculty-led, so.
Certainly. Thank you for bringing it to us, though. Put it on the board agenda so you can share it with us and we can have this conversation in open board meetings about the public and all of our patrons and our educators get a chance to hear us talk about it.
Thank you.
I also heard Randy Watson present this, and it sounded very exciting. But, I mean, all the, the teachers in each of the schools need to be 100% on board. You know, the 80%, I'm not so sure about. I think it's a full-school effort, principal, teachers, et cetera.
So with that, again, giving you that information and the additional handout on KSDE School Redesign, now we're transitioning on. Ms. Caspers is coming to the podium to talk about career industry certifications as we conclude the year. We do have the data that has come in on our CTE certifications and students. So, she has that data for you by overall population, as well as by subgroup. And we'll turn it over to you if you have any questions for Ms. Caspers.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President, board members, district leadership, and patrons. It's my thrill to bring positive data to you. It's been a couple of years since I've brought this to you. And when I got it, I was pretty excited when I presented it to Dr. Anderson. So, what I'm sharing with you is five years of data of when this started. And if you recall, Senate Bill 155 was initiated by Governor Brownback as far as industry certifications. And there was funding behind that. There is very little funding behind that now for secondary education. But I wanted to show you all of the certifications that our students have been earning. The very first year in 2013, we had eight students earn a Certified Nurse Aid certification. To qualify as far as this data, students had not only had to earn an industry certification, but also graduate from high school. They may have gotten a certification, but if they did not graduate, we could not count that as positive data. So, it was very, Washroom Tech is a majority of these industry certifications. And you can see that they have expanded their certifications, and also the state has expanded those as well. But you can see, as we go down the list from ServSafe all the way down to Industry Fundamentals, there are more that have been added. And so, the very first year, we had eight. 2014, we have 31. 2015, we have 70. And so, we're almost doubling every year. Unfortunately, in 2016, we had a drop. And the reason there was a drop is because Washroom Tech had not offered as many sections of some classes for our students. And welding was a huge demand. There was a waiting list to get in. There was a waiting list for Certified Nurse Aid. There was a waiting list to get into automotive, and they've expanded some of those classes. So, then in 2017, you can see that we increased again, back to 63. ServSafe is in the culinary arts program, and that's a food manager. It's not a food handler. It's a supervisor position or certification that they earn. handler, it's a supervisor position or certification that they earn. Welding, we had five students. Construction, two, and construction industry is really hurting. Students are not pursuing that career field quite as strongly as they have in the past. Automotive, it is very challenging to get that certification, because there are four areas they have to certify in. And so they pretty much have to complete two years of programming at Washburn Tech to get that. I-Car, which is collision repair. And then manufacturing, we had one student, and that is a program over at Washburn Tech that has even struggling as far as membership. OSHA, and First Aid, CPR, AED, and Energy Industry Fundamentals were all T-CAP. 100% of the students passed the Energy Industry Fundamentals, and Mr. Woods is raising his hand on that, because that is a certification that is not easy for a high school student to pass, and they have to pass at 80% to get that. So we now have 98 students, so we have increased significantly from eight to 98 students. Next year, I want to add that our teaching training, we are going to include paraprofessional certification for our students as well. And we were very pleased that three of our students from the teaching training have been hired as paras into the school district. And when they were being interviewed, Mrs. McKenzie was very excited about those students, and I have since been reached out to by another student who wants to pursue education working with a deaf, and she would like to come and be a para this next school year before she goes to college. So we're pretty excited about that. And then the last part I thought was very important is to look at the diverse certifications and how our student population has been performing. And I like to say that each year, we're increasing that diversity as far as the industry certifications that students have been earning. So, very positive news, very exciting news, and looking forward, I don't, I hate to put goals as doubling it again next year, that would be quite a bit, but it would be pretty awesome. So with that, I'm going to open it up to questions.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have to ask you. First of all, I want to tell you, thank you for a wonderful presentation. So I love to see this, because it wasn't too long ago, and we were still kind of dreaming of being able to do these things for our students. So to you, and to the administration, and to all of our educators who are, I know, are putting their blood, sweat, and tears behind each and every one of those students getting these certifications, that are really going to make a concrete difference in their earnings potential and what they can go on and do, and just the avenues that they have open to them now, when they want to decide what they want to do, they're so much broader. Quick question, and I'll confess, this may be a canned question, but I think it's probably good just for the board to hear, and I'm certain that it's somewhat true of all of these courses, but when you go back to the Energy Industry Fundamentals course, and the five students who passed it, this is the first school year that we've offered it. We just got ourselves fully into the pathway for the state. Can you explain to me a little bit what goes into getting a certification for the industry, Energy Industry Fundamentals?
Sure. There is an online course our students complete with Flint Hills Technical College. So the students earn college credit for this class as well, and it's tuition-free. They earn three college credits from Flint Hills Tech in Energy Industry Fundamentals. And there is a set curriculum, and then our facilitator has been trained, our teacher, has been trained by Flint Hills Tech on the curriculum. So it is college-level curriculum that they're doing, but they go online, and then they have projects that they have to complete, and then there are assessments. And this is a course that is approved by the Center for Energy Workforce Development, a national organization. So this is a national certification that validates the students have the fundamental knowledge for the energy pathway. It doesn't make them an electrician, doesn't make them a power plant manager, anything along those lines. It is just a certification, and I don't mean just, it is a certification of their knowledge of the basic fundamentals of the energy pathway, which with that certification, when they apply, that will demonstrate to an employer they have the fundamental knowledge to begin their training program of whatever they choose to pursue.
And the reason why I asked that question, and I'm glad you hit already, my next question was going to be, what does it cost to get all these great, you know, all this great training if you're a student? Zero, because that's so important, because all of the things you just mentioned, and all the things that are in that course, everything from electromagnetic induction and generation and understanding fuel sources and generation portfolios, to transmission and distribution, those are the exact same things that they would be doing if they got hired as an apprentice for us, for Westar Energy Field, and those things would be included in their apprenticeship. And so they're already going to be coming in with baseline knowledge like this. So they'll have a much, a leg up, I should say, an advantage on their knowledge. Also, if they decide they're going to become an engineer, electrical, or mechanical, or whatever it may be, they're going to take this stuff in college. If they go on to get a power plant technology degree, they're going to actually have to take this specific class as a part of their coursework. They'll already have it.
Right.
So, I just think it's a wonderful thing, and our educators and our administration are definitely to be applauded in the board for their vision in putting this together, so.
I want to reiterate that CEWD, the Center for Energy Workforce Development, across the nation, 70% of the high school students do not pass this class.
In fact, they were skeptical of us doing this.
Yes.
Because they thought, well, you guys, and excuse the way they referred to it, but you guys in flyover country aren't going to be able to, you know, give this course and instruct high school students to have it pass, that this is more of a college-level thing.
Right. They really questioned whether we could do it. But I think the whole point of it is, through T-CAP, we were able to implement it in with other curriculum as well to show the relevancy of the curriculum, and that's what a lot of industry certifications will do, is make it relevant as far as what it is in their careers. That's what's so important for that. The other part of that is, now we need to get industry to ask for those certifications more so in the Midwest. It's very popular on the East Coast and the West Coast, but our employers are not asking for those certifications as much as I would prefer. Now, I have a tendency to be ahead of the game, so I have to be patient with those employers, but eventually, we will get there, where those certifications, most jobs anymore will ask for those certifications rather than a degree.
Ms. Caspers, can you restate the total line? I didn't see the very end, the last year's overall and this year's. You mentioned the 90-plus figure for this year, but can you restate what those two pieces are in terms of last year compared to this year? I also want to share with the board, our placement of staff, because you all met Angelica Brown, who was a CTE person, stat student, who is now full-time, by the way. Our teaching component is very similar in that way than anybody that goes into the teaching pathway. So the two students that we saw, that I had the pleasure to meet and observing with Ms. Caspers, the teaching courses that we hired, they're actually going to college in the evening and actually working for us in the afternoon. And so embedding that paraprofessional test will allow for them to walk right into a job at the end of their last semester, and then still, you know, use that to help pay for college. But the total numbers will be great as well.
Sure. So 2013, we had eight. 2014, 31. 2015, we had 70. 2016 was 49, and then 98 for 2017.
Forty-plus to 98 for the last two years was really the jump that we were really excited about.
Any other questions from board members?
Is this list, is it inclusive of all the certifications we're going to in the future? Are we aspiring additional certifications?
We are aspiring for additional certifications. We are hoping to add more ServSafe certification, the food handler, all three comprehensive high schools can do that, and we want to include CAP City in that. ServSafe certification is helpful for a student even as a part-time job at a fast-food restaurant. If they walk in with ServSafe certification at Sonic, they make an extra 50 cents an hour, which, you know, as a high school student, part-time, 50 cents an hour is quite a bit. Perkins and so forth, if you walk in, you get an extra dollar an hour. So, you know, even those small industry certifications add up in the beginning as far as moving forward. We also, as we get our E M T, look at certification there, our fire science for certification. We're trying to align our automotive program, our mobile equipment, with Washburn Tech. There is no way we can get the certifications done in our high school programs, but if we can help with their curriculum, then they wouldn't have to go to school for two years at Washburn Tech, maybe only one year to get those certifications, and that would help them. So absolutely, as we move forward, any curriculum we look at, we look at industry certifications that we can add, that our students can afford.
It really makes it important, then, that our kids, but if, like, if they want to be in the auto, they have to be able to start there in their junior year.
Or align our curriculum, our mobile equipment curriculum at Topeka High in Highland Park, so they can get credit for the classes they're taking in our programs, so then they can better complete, or hopefully complete by the time they're a senior at Washburn Tech.
Right, but they'd still, you know, they'd still have to have access to it, and I know that we've had waiting lists, and we can't get all the kids in who want it, so it just, it's one of those areas where we have to figure out how to expand it. And I guess that's what concerns me more than anything. You know, 98 kids is great, almost 100 children involved in getting certifications, but how many high school students do we have who aren't going on to college but who need to be moving in this direction? So we got a long ways to go to really start making a huge difference in some of those, some of those, for some of those kids, but this is a start. I just, you know, I always think of this, but it's got to be more, it's got to be more. And it's always called money and time and space and all of those things that we always have to be creative about, but, yeah, it's a struggle. Thank you.
Ms. Caspers, I, can you speak to those kids, especially the CNAs, jobs after they get certified? I mean, is, I mean, 63 in one year, are they able to get jobs for that many?
Oh, yes, definitely. There is a plethora of positions, and actually, one of Mr. Dalton's biomedical students who had her CNA and because of his class, was able to get a position at Brewster Place. And that's their first hire from Topeka Public Schools, and they said, if we can send more students like that, they would hire them all. So there is not a problem. And plus, it's a stepping stone for further education and degrees and certifications. So it's like the foundation course for them to be able to get that experience, but sometimes employers will help pay for their post-secondary education as a result of their employment at that company, which helps our students as well.
Any further questions? Thank you for your positive presentation.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Caspers. Now, moving forward, when we, as we conclude the superintendent's update, college and career readiness, remember that's our strategic plan, our focus. So the hope would be the doubling of where we were last year. That's what we really should be doing each year. We have about 1,000 students overall, and so as we increase those pathways, open up T-CAP, but our goal would be, if we can double in a year, then that's kind of the forward movement we're continuing to look for. And then the other piece is placing all of these students in jobs. Stormont Vale has had a conversation about placing our CNAs, and so an individual there has, you know, asked for the names of the students that still need jobs, and so that's been a positive piece, and, of course, we're hiring the ones we can within the school system. So it's exciting movement forward, but remember, this really is kind of the core of the strategic plan as we move forward this year and next year.
And speaking to it, I know of a particular, of a student who, from Topeka High, who got a CNA, followed by an L P N, and she's now in the second semester nursing school, working on her own. So it, we're talking about a stepping stone, and that's, that's what we're seeing. Next item is an action item. Mr. Robbins?
Thank you, Mr. President, and the rest of the board members. This action item is one that we want to conclude from an initial presentation that was made to the board back on June 15th by Ms. Susan Duffy, representing Topeka Metro. The proposal was to increase the number of bus passes made available to secondary students at Topeka Public Schools, so that, basically, the board would be ensuring that any high school student who needed a bus pass had access to that bus pass, not only for travel to and from school, but this would be a bus pass that could be used for any occasion year-round, so not only to get to and from school, but if a student need transportation to employment after school, that could be attained by use of this bus pass. The bus pass and number, if you remember the presentation, was for 4,000 bus passes. I think at that point in time, there were some questions from the board as far as whether or not we had need for that number. In looking at the number of projected high school students that we will have in Topeka Public Schools for this upcoming academic year, that number is 3,900. We would subtract from that number those that we estimate will be driving. Also, we did not take into account the number of students that are delivered by their parents or the number of walkers that we have going to their homeschool. The proposal was for 4,000 only. Since that point in time, Ms. Duffy and I have had continuous conversation. There has been a revised proposal with lower numbers that would more reflect what we think the usage would be. That has been made to Topeka Public Schools, and it is ready for the board to consider. We had proposals at the 3,500 level, and we also have proposals for a 3,000 level for bus passes. The dollars that are associated at those levels, and the level I can say that we kind of zeroed in on based on what we feel the need would be, was the 3,000 level number, and that 3,000 bus passes has been offered at a proposed price of $400,000 for the entire year. In order to have the bus passes arrive on time for the start of school, Topeka Metro needs for this board to make a decision and have that decision communicated to them by July 7th, which is tomorrow, that would allow them enough time to have the bus passes ordered and then received on time for the start of school. So this is what is being asked of the board this evening, for you to consider this proposal and give some direction to district administration, so that we can relay that information and give some direction to Topeka Metro as far as what your desire is.
Thank you. Mr. Robbins, discussion? Any questions, Mr. Robbins? And we also have Susan Duffy here.
Well, I think this is an incredible opportunity for our kids. We know that we have students who have trouble getting to school. I know Susan talked about what they're like when they get on the first bus in the morning. They're barely walking and talking, and, and then they have to get on another bus, most of them, because they have to transfer to get up to Topeka High or Highland Park or Topeka West, wherever they're headed. But I, I, I know that it's hugely important for a number of these kids. And you can think about it, these kids are taking two buses to get to high school. We don't want to put anything that acts as a barrier. And not having the money for a ticket seems to me to be a huge barrier that we can't afford to have in place. So I am offering a motion to accept the final numbers that Mr. Robbins just gave us. Don't ask me to quote them again, 3,000 and some kind of change. I mean, tickets in about 400,000, wasn't it? Is it exactly 400,000? I'm always afraid of recording around figure, because nothing ever comes out around figure.
That is the current proposal.
Okay, so I'm offering a motion to, that the board accept this. I think it's an important barrier that we can eliminate for our kids.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second? So the motion dies for lack of second. Is there more discussion?
So, just to refresh my, my memory, so our original proposal was 4,000 passes for $500,000.
That's correct, Mr. Woods.
And so the new one is 3,000, which is something closer to what we think we might actually need, but $400,000. When I, when I look at that, I guess what I don't understand, and I just may not be doing the math correctly in my mind, is it seems like the per-ticket price increases by like over 100 bucks.
It doesn't increase over 100 bucks. The per pass price for the original 4,000 was $125. 3,000 at 400,000, the price is about $133.
But, okay, yeah, yeah, so I'm wrong, I'm wrong. It didn't increase over 100 bucks. It increases over the, yeah, over the $100 in that estimate.
Correct.
What, what, do we know why the per pass cost would increase?
I can't speak to that.
And then, if we may ask our friends from Topeka Metro, more so than any kind of challenge in that question, I really just don't know, so.
Ms. Duffy, can you come to the microphone, or either of you, to answer any questions that have arisen? Ms. Duffy, it looks like you're, or the other individual, it looks like Ms. Duffy has left in.
I'm sorry, I'm going to take the microphone to.
Ms. Duffy, no, no, we'd rather bring the microphone to you.
It's good, I'm good.
I am very sorry. Well, so I, as we're, as we're doing that, I guess, I mean, that's, I'll, I'll just share kind of my general, the reason why I wasn't willing to offer a second. It's just, yeah, is I have additional questions like that one, on what's the actual per pass price really break out to? Is there some kind of rationale for like a bulk price deal? I mean, I know, I know we aren't selling like specific commodities, but I mean, does it work out the same way? And, and also, I mean, my question just would be, do we know for certain that we actually really need 3,000? Based off the numbers that we had last year, if we subtracted, as you mentioned, all of the drivers, all of the walkers and riders, for the kids of ours who are within that one mile to 2.5 miles, do we know that that still equals, equals the same number? That's, that's more my question. I just don't know.
In terms of the, let me take the last first. In terms of the number you need, I think that's more coming from you all. Again, that 4,000 figure was based on about that many high school students. We've been providing you 800 passes a year for those students who live two and a half miles out. Then we do know throughout the year, you have been purchasing around $37,000 in miscellaneous bus passes throughout all your schools. And it's, it's been a variety of, of bus passes. A student pass for a month normally sales for $40 a month. So if you take that $40 and you multiply it out for a year, you're talking about $480. So you can see the figure that we're offering you is a deeply discounted. We began our agreement with Topeka USD 501 back in 2012, 2013 school year, where the district spent $367,000 for 800 passes. The next year, you began to fall on some more difficult times. We, we collectively, Larry and I talked, and we renegotiated that down to $306,000. In the 2014, 2015 year, we maintained it at $306,000, just for the 800 passes. Then in the 2015, 16 year, I received a call from Larry. Can you help us out? We're having issues, don't know that we'll be able to do this. We renegotiated down to 244,000. So as you can see, over the last several years, we've been, we understand that you've had some issues beyond your control. We see every day these kids coming and going. And we believe we're part of the solution factor here, of getting kids to and from school, that larger, getting them to graduate, getting them to work, getting them where they need to be safely. So we have gone from 367,000 to 244,800 in a four-year time period. And it was during some very, you were making some very difficult decisions. At this time, I started talking with Larry back in September about why not all high school students going to school? And we put a proposal on the table at that time, and that was 720,000. So if I keep talking to myself, you know, we're gonna, we've come down, we think significantly, and somebody may say, well, what difference does it make? You're, you're going by there anywhere. We will probably be adding additional buses on the way home. On the way to school, they're all coming from different locations. We're crowded in the morning. People are standing up. Students stand up and let the adults ride, but folks are standing up. It's a short ride, but they're standing up. On the way home, we'll probably have to add some buses at Topeka High and I would imagine Highland Park to get them off the high school grounds as quickly as possible and get it so that they can make their transfer down at the station. And I'll turn it over, Jim. I don't know if you would like to. Jim services our new board chair.
Yeah, you thought I was just your nurses today, helping her out. We've been committed to this project for the last five years. I've been on the board the entire time we've been doing this. We realize you have a very specific challenge, but we do as well. We operate using public monies. This is a questionable time for us too, given where the federal government's going in support of transportation issues. And we believe the number that we propose to you, not only as an individual per-ticket price, is a tremendous discount from what you paid in the past and what you would have, an individual would have to pay going forward. The board has been enthusiastic and supportive, Susan, of this, but we're not able to do this for free. And we're looking for a partnership that fairly treats both organizations in order to serve these students.
So my hesitation is I'm not 100% certain how many bus passes we're gonna need. And I'm fully supportive and incredibly appreciative of the partnership that is formed between Topeka Metro and Topeka Public Schools, because it serves, it's mutually beneficial for your mission and our mission to educate students. I don't know how many we're gonna need. I mean, so we've got 3,900 students that would be in high school. How many are we gonna ride the bus? I mean, how many of them live close enough to walk? How many of them ride with their sibling or their neighbor? You know, I just, and so I wonder if there's a happy medium between, and I recognize you need to order buses or passes tomorrow, but you came a month ago, so I'm not, you know, that's not, that's isn't at all, but. Is there, is there some way where we can meet in the middle where we, we really figure out how many do we actually need?
Yes. Please remember, this is a one-year contract. And with the amount we're talking about, I believe it's incumbent upon us and you to, we work collectively together to ensure that every parent knows we're an option and we're a safe option. That the kids know we're a safe option. We will need to market this, just like anything else. In the fall, we're there, we're saying hey to the student, handing them a bottle of Gatorade. We just don't let them grab it. We want to see, I see you, you see me, we have a relationship. We need to ramp this up big time. So that, as I said, we've always been there in the summer at registration. We will need to do a mailing, we will need to advertise. We've talked about having the schools do something local. They all have their kind of photojournalism. Maybe they come up with something that's cool to ride the bus to go to school, whatever it is. I mean, we will need to market it. You're correct, we really don't know how many. But I think if the parent knows that's an option now, I think it will, I, I think we will need to sell them as well. And maybe, we've been at the open houses. When there's been open houses, we've been in each one of them, at the front, as parents walk in the door. We will have to ramp this up big time so they understand. Your kid just a week ago or two weeks ago received a school pass. Do you know that they can ride the bus free and not just to school, but everywhere? And I think that's what we can do on our end with your help, is to get into each of the schools. Now, Mr. Robbins had talked about taking some of these to the middle school. We do know that middle school kids ride. I'm sure there would be a group of middle schoolers that would be thrilled to, their parents would be thrilled that they're receiving a pass. 3,000, I'm surprised at the high number that go, that ride to Topeka West. But when we're averaging 10,000 rides a month with just our 800 passes, these kids are riding. We're right at 10,000 rides a month with 800 passes. It's, there's, it's, you know, like I shared, we lived there on Boswell over by Washburn, and it was a five-minute hop on the bus and get home. Everybody in the neighborhood did it. I paid for it, but I sure as heck wasn't gonna give a freshman a car. So they may not use it like their senior year, they got the car. In fact, in the leadership group, that was, had four USD 501 students, she told me this year is the first year she won't have to ride the bus, because she got a car. But she's been riding the other three years. So we don't know. So I think we look at the data, we can tell you where the students get on and where they get off, and how many times they ride. That's the beauty of this chip data. We can provide, provide data to your, to you folks to analyze, and I know you're good at doing that. But it's kind of the, put a, put a mark in the ground and, and go with it. But I think if we market it, I think we have a good chance of kids riding.
Can you tell me, there have been several numbers thrown out, and I may be confused. What, what was the 280,000 that you spoke to, just to?
The 280,000?
Yeah. 244, that's what we paid?
244,800 is what you've paid for the last two years for the 800. Yes.
And it's, you're proposing 3,000 riders for $400,000?
Yes. And how did we come, we were 25 grand off. And so I offered a, split it down the middle. But we're doing other things for the kids. And I sent, I believe, was it you, Dr. Mickelson, a list, or Larry, some of the other things we've been doing throughout the school year in different schools, and getting the kids over to Washburn for a tour of Washburn. There's other opportunities where we've, we've stepped in and provided that, or at least they for the public good service. We've also made it clear to teachers that they can ride our buses for free for a field trip. We can't come to the school, but we can pick you up along route, and we will do a how-to ride the, the day before. So there are other things that we can do just beyond getting them to and from the school. And again, the fact that we're on the road till 7:30 gets a lot of kids home for, for, after athletic activities or drama, whatever else.
Thank you for the presentation, for the extra information. I've been asked some of these exact same questions. I think one of the other questions that comes to mind, we've kind of assessed the high school need. Have we done any assessment of the middle school?
No, we haven't.
And definitely, if you look at the per-ticket price, I mean, you're going from like 306 to $133 per ticket. $133.33. I guess the other question is, that's still the whole year, starting when?
We would start August 15th, or that's when our kids ride free ends. And so whenever the first day of school is, it starts. And then it runs continuously whether they're in session or not. Further, we also offer a special during the Christmas holiday and spring break, which is a family holiday. If you're a family, you get to ride free during the holiday. So we're trying to, to impress upon folks that, that there are ways to do things. You want to go to movies with your kids during spring break, use us. I mean, we, we believe that this is what we should be offering to our community. And that fully integrate our community with, with public best service.
And I definitely, I personally appreciate that. I mean, I appreciate the kind of partner you've been. I, I think we're all just trying to make sure this is where we have, we need to go at this point. Considering our, our financial flows for all of us hasn't been questionable at best. But I definitely appreciate the additional information that Mr. Robbins, I appreciate the question you shared earlier, and also the list of activities that you all would be doing. Those are the ones you will continue to do.
Yes. And again, if there's any grant opportunities, we are willing to sit down and help craft a grant. I do know that there's some federal funding received for those that are two and a half miles out. I think there's some federal funds that come in. But any opportunity that we see, or you see, we would be more than happy to. But any opportunity that we see, or you see, we would be more than happy to share in writing of that, of that grant opportunity and, and get that in the door.
How will we determine who, we just ask students if they want a pass? Is that the plan? Or how, what do you propose there? Because, because we do online registration now, so we no longer have to stand in the Topeka High cafeteria for four hours in the afternoon. Pretty simple to register now, but the downside of that is you don't have the parents with a checkbook saying, oh, I wanted, my kid needs a pass. And so that handoff, I think, is gonna be critical.
Yes, and the fact that we've been doing it for, well, actually five years with 800 of your students, we've already got a mechanism in place. It's important, we capture the number on the card with the student, ensure that they understand, they sign a card, and if they lose it, whatever your policy is, it's replaced at a cost, or it's not replaced. But that will have to, you'll have to figure that, how, how do these high school kids, I hear there is a bus pass, where do I go? Or do we make an announcement on, we get clever and make announcements on the early morning and say, hey, come in, we'll have Topeka Metro folks set up, and we're there before and after school, and we're working with your staff to ensure that we're doing it correctly, off the right list. But I mean, those are things that we need to think through well before school starts.
Thank you, Mr. President. So just to reiterate, I guess, what everyone else said, our thanks for your partnership over the years. So I do want to make sure you hear that loud and clear. And most of the questions you hear from us have to do with the fact that I think people, the general public might, you know, I think they have the misconception that we are floating in money now, since the state finally went forward instead of backwards for a year on school finance. We, we aren't, we're still, you know, probably a billion dollars statewide short in terms of where we were seven years ago. So we've still got difficult decisions that we'll probably have to make. And we've got a strategic plan with all kinds of, you know, enhancements in order to move forward that we'll have to consider just this month. So that's probably where more and more of the questions are coming from, is trying to understand the, the dollar figures and exactly what we're buying, so we all feel like we have our arms around it in terms of what we're spending and how it fits into our plan. Yes, sir?
I was just going to add too, we were pleased to offer the bus wrap for USD 501 to recognize that you are a partner with us, and we are proud of the high schools that we have here. And that is something that we would, that's been out there for several years, that we would work to see if, if that needs to be updated as well.
Two really quick questions, and mainly they're just process questions in my mind. So are we, or is, is Topeka Metro kind of, has there been any pilot study or anything figuring out what bus utilization could look like? Especially doing kind of a universal approach for school districts?
In terms of where your folks live right now, or where they're getting on board, the 800, we know they're out beyond the two and a half mile limit. In terms of where do your students live, more central, we don't have access to that except through the census data. And we just received word that there is a program out there through the census data that shows pretty much where your student population lives. And we were hoping to be able to take that and straddle that along our routes. But unless you have some information that we can lay our route system, I will say that over, is it 90% of our folks live within, 90% of Topecas live within a quarter mile of a bus stop, of a bus route, of a bus route. And a quarter of a mile is, if you're heading down 17th around Washburn, it's, it's half of one, of that one side, not a whole side.
I'm sure we have that, that data. I'll share it with you. My other question just was, are there any other school districts around in our county or anywhere else that are doing this?
I am not aware of anybody in this state that is doing this right now. Tulsa is the only one that I know, they are continuing their second year. But, and I know there are other school districts, not just here in Kansas, though, I, I'm not aware.
I think one thing, Patrick, is that over the past several years, the Board has told Susan again and again, we want to be solution providers, not just retailers of transportation services. So our approach has been, whether there is strong national track records for programs, we're willing to try to work and partner, to try to engage any partnership with finding solutions to their transportation needs. And that's why I think the Board has been so supportive of this unique partnership. We go and visit transit agencies across the country all the time, and there really aren't the kind of comparable programs that we're doing right here. That's why we don't have a lot to show you in comparison, because most transit agencies' answer to you all would be, this is what our student pass costs. If you want one, buy one. And that's not how we've approached this. We want to see if we can help you make it more possible that every kid makes it to school every day. We're all benefited when that happens.
One more question. The 24, 244,800, that's the initial cost that we pay for the 800 bus passes, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And then throughout the year, you're saying that we, we still get truancy passes?
We added up all the bits and pieces and things that come in through last year in a total, $37,000 worth of bus passes.
And that's in addition to the 24, or the two?
Yeah, that was in addition to the 244,000. All of that goes away.
The?
All of that goes away.
Okay.
Yeah.
Truancy passes are about 93, 93 individual passes monthly.
And you're paying full student price for those, the $40 a month for those passes?
Yes. Any further questions? If I can summarize, and you, be sure and jump in if I misspeak. So we're spending 280,000 for 800 passes. And you, our proposal is 400,000 for 2,200 more passes.
Correct.
I?
No, no claim.
Is that all right?
No. The 800 passes is 244,800.
Okay.
Exactly, for a year.
But we are spending on top of that another almost 40,000?
Another 30, so yeah, almost 40,000.
Yeah.
That's correct.
So that's what we're spending on the Topeka Metro, 200, approximately 280,000.
Yes.
And for our 800 passes, well, for 800 extra plus. So it just seems to me, and I'm sure open for discussion, but it seems like a great deal.
So what if, my biggest uncertainty still is, I don't know how many we're gonna need. And so what if we had some sort of agreement that we will buy as many passes as we need? And you refund us money if we don't, if kids don't use them in the first three months, then we get money back?
When we place an order, a bulk order this size, we get a pretty good discount on the per chip. It's when we get below a certain level, they start charging you 20 bucks a card. And so we would want to make that initial purchase of 3,000.
So the card's storable, so we could use them the following year?
Actually, they're not. What we have done, as we've said, here's the start date, here's the end date. At that point, they turn off and a student tries to use it, it won't work after school's out. And so that has, but at that point in time, we've had the kids ride free. So student, I'm a student today, and Topeka High stops, but I'm going on to summer school. We let you onboard when we make them overlap of just a day or so, and then we let you on and you're riding free as a student. Now, a lot of kids have turned 19. I've told my drivers, let them on, if you've been letting them on as a student during the year, and you're pretty sure they graduated or whatever, just let them on this school year, because next year they have to have that new one, or they won't be able to board the bus.
What if we buy enough, what does a card cost? 3,000 of them?
Yeah, and if we buy in bulk, I believe they're like $5 apiece.
I haven't done the math, but what if we were still buy as many bus passes? I mean, our goal is to get every kid to school and allow an ample amount of time to you, so that you've done your marketing, we do our marketing, we've educated parents and students on the possibility of riding the bus. Let's say we gave them 90 days, and we, we take the tally after 90 days, and we pay 133 dollars for those, whoever's ridden the bus once, or 90 days during that time period, we pay you a full price of 133 dollars for that, and we pay $5 a card for any of these cards. I don't know what that, what that math turns out to be. That seems, that would solve my fears of buying 3,000 and we use a thousand of them. Does that make sense?
And I understand where you're getting to. I think we're getting back to the point of?
I want them both.
Yeah, you, you do. And where we're saying, it's a bulk price for a bulk commodity.
Bulk number of dollars.
And, but I, and I would have to look at, at Mr. Robbins. I believe that our commitment to being in the school and showing up with the bus on freshman orientation day, and doing things with the students to encourage them to ride, I don't think you can doubt our commitment to ensure that this happens.
Absolutely. And I, I just, I don't want to spend $100,000 that our kids wouldn't use. So that's, I'm incredibly grateful for the services that you and your organization provide to students. So I'm just trying to be physically responsible with money that we're not certain we will have, so.
And I think both of the, we find ourselves in the same place too.
We can go to the left side, I'll go to the right side.
Right, as half of our budget is funded through the Mellevy with the city of Topeka taxpayers. Yes.
Yes, sir.
Steffi, I just have one question I'd like to ask. When we're looking at, we've talked about bulk pricing, why is it not possible, when we're talking about 1,000 less passes than what we were originally talking about, that we couldn't maintain the same per-pass price at 125 dollars?
Well, at that point, I did go to the Board and I did visit with them, Jim.
That deal doesn't work for us very good. We were willing to address your need by making a drastic cut in the per-price cost that you've been paying. But now that we've mentioned, given you this 133 dollar number as the number you're working from, and now to bring that back to some smaller number of passes, perhaps your old purchase of 800 passes as you've done in previous years, we think we've come well more than halfway. We certainly came well more than dropping our price more than halfway from where you are, and I just don't think the Board will support it.
Just? Mr. Witt?
Just to make sure I understand, I guess, what we're saying is, that price would be closer to like 375,000 if the per-ticket price stayed at what it was during your 4,000-ticket offer? Is that right?
If we did, if we did just, I'm, I'm, we've got so many numbers.
Yeah, I'm sorry, just to make sure I'm doing the math. 375, okay.
So I'm, I'm just, I'm focused as a comparison on what we've done in previous years and what that worked out, if you wanted to divide by the number of passes versus what this proposal is. This proposal got the price down to 133 dollars. And we are willing to support that because we see a community benefit of us working together to try to get every family to know they've got an option here. Now, I appreciate very much, Scott, what you're saying, about you don't want to buy a pass you don't want, but we're making an attempt to try to so significantly discount the total number of passes that, in essence, it's far below whatever we're offering in any combination anywhere right now for people. And that's why the Board's been enthusiastic, because in the end, we think as a partnership, if these young people make it to school, the community benefits. Hopefully, they'll make more money, they can pay more money in taxes, and we can all operate more efficiently from that.
So I, so I definitely get that. I wanted to make sure I understood, so I guess based off what I just heard, the, the additional 25K is kind of the sticking point that makes it work, doesn't work?
That's what does appear to be. Based on what I'm hearing, you say, like?
Just to make sure I understand, I'm just reiterating what I heard.
And what Susan has shared with me about the ongoing discussions that Larry and she have had over this issue.
So I mean, I only ask these questions, I want to make sure that you all don't at all feel, you know, like we're belaboring this, because if there's any lack of faith or any lack of gratitude for what you all have done, we really do appreciate it. We share your, very strongly, in fact, it's a core part of our mission, that every one of our students have a way to get to school, to be in front of one of our teachers and to learn. So we, that's a, that's a goal of ours. We just want to make sure we're doing it completely right, because just like you, we've got the responsibility to be good stewards of our taxpayers' dollars. And since they already pay tax to us and they pay one to you, we have to work together to make sure. So I wanted to make sure I understood. Would there be any consideration at all by, by, by your Board if it were to kind of go for that additional lower number that Mr. Robbins just mentioned?
I am one of seven votes, as you are one of seven votes, and?
I'm your number one in my heart.
Yeah. Bless you. I can't speak for the other six voters going forward on a different proposal, I just know what we voted to give her the authority to do so far.
I think we've discussed this to death. So do I have a motion, one way or another? So do, yeah, I died because of seconds. I'm sorry. That's correct. Do you want to remake your motion?
I will try to. I will move that we accept the last negotiation prices and numbers of tickets that Mr. Robbins gave to us, 3,000 tickets, $400,000. 400,000, isn't what I said it is?
400,000.
No, $400,000 to make sure that all?
No, $400,000 to make sure that all of our high school students and possibly some of our middle school students have access to bus transportation in order to get to school.
So, now do I have a second? Reverend Williams, seconds. Hopefully, no more discussion.
You know, I'm going to vote for this, but we will have data after this year, and I assume it's different data as years, as students come and go, but it should provide a foundation that we can base next year's ridership.
Absolutely. And added to that for us is that we've barely had a year under our belts with our Fairbox system that collects the data for us. So, combining these things together, we're going to have a very thorough understanding of who rode, when, and how, that legitimately, we can both make a decision about going forward and hopefully not doing it on the eve of the bus purchase date.
And just for my own clarification, the 10,000 rides a month from the 800 students who have bus passes now, is that 10,000 like a ride to the transfer station and then another ride? Is that two rides, or is that one ride? And then...
Every time, every time they swipe their card, they wave it, it waves or taps, it counts as a ride.
So, it's, one of these students could have four rides in a day if they've got two bus rides there and two bus rides home, is that...
That's correct.
A lot of rides.
Mr. Woods?
So, I'm definitely going to join Dr. Mickelson and his comments, and say that I'm going to vote for this as well, with very significant concerns and a big eye, you know, watching the data. I think it's, it is appropriate to err on the side of making sure that as many students as possible get to school, so I'm willing to err on that side. However, I do want to make sure that we get really good data, that we know how many bus passes are going to be used, that we certainly don't have a situation where, you know, we're left with 1,000 bus passes or something like that, and we don't really have anything to do with them. That would be probably the worst situation, just because our, you know, that would mean our taxpayers pay taxes to us, and they also pay them to you, but they're paying them again to you through us. So, that is my primary concern, and the thing I'll be curious to hear a report about afterward.
Thank you, and I just remembered something. We did get a call from a parent wanting to know if they would be able to take advantage. We sell them to you, it's up to you how they are used, whether a parent could use them or any student, staff, faculty, and whether it's for, I mean, they become your property and can be used as you see the need.
So, essentially, the bus becomes a company vehicle?
The, well...
Company car. Basically, I mean, kind of with that logic.
Yes, and remember, there are 99 elements on that chip card, and as soon as you get other types of readers that can read that, then this could become their picture ID, their trip to the pool, you know? I mean, and I've talked with Gina about how can the libraries, how can we work with them, and I'm over at the library. So, there's a lot of potential, because this isn't new technology. This isn't leading edge, breaking edge, it's been out there for quite a while. So, when we sell them, it's up to you what you do with them, but we did get an inquiry as to whether they would be able to take advantage. I suggested they talk to their administrative staff.
I will agree with both of those, needing to see the data at the end of the year, number one. And then, one caveat as well that we haven't all addressed, and that's a program by the administration to get these passes out, and perhaps in conjunction with metro marketing program for those kids. So, we would have to put that on administration's shoulders. Are we ready to vote? Okay.
All votes are in. Motion carries.
Very good. We are now ready for Board member comments, and going from past history, we'll start at the end of the table, and since Mrs. Kirk isn't there anymore, Reverend John Williams, you get to be first. And, I don't, I can't even imagine how hard that is. And, well, easy for you, yeah. And we do very much appreciate what you do. Ms. Johnson? Mr. Woods?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to thank my colleagues. First of all, just congratulate my two colleagues who ascended to serving as our leaders. We're glad to have you as another layer of service, as you know. But we are thrilled, and I know that, well, I don't do that anymore, so I won't say that. I know that speaks for the entire Board, but I know that everybody feels the same way I do about the faith that we have in YouTube, how excited we are. I will thank all of my colleagues for their grace, you know, and their indulgence for the last few years, and I'm just excited about where we go in the future.
Thank you again to everyone for letting me serve, and I want to make it clear that the reason I was always at the end of the table was not that I was being punished all of these years, it's just that my hearing out of the left ear is really bad. And those of you who know me know it's bad enough out of the other ear. So, it was my preference always to sit down at the end of the table so that I could hear better. So, you may have me saying, "We're off," and please, I don't know what, you're going to have to speak up, because I'm really, Patrick's, he's sitting right next to me now, and he turns his head, and I have no clue what he's saying. So, yeah, I'm just, anyway, thank you very much. I look forward to serving and look for your continued support.
I would like to thank Mr. Woods for his capable presidency this last two years. I think you've done an admirable job. I'm sure that people in the district will still be calling you, and I just want you to know that I'm not jealous.
I will be giving them your cellphone.
But really, thank you for your service, Patrick, very much so. And again, once again, I'll just say that I appreciate your confidence, and I will do the best I can. You have my email, you have my cellphone, so if a problem arises, I will try to take care of it. However, I really need all six of you to do that. So, thank you very much. Without any other business, I will take a motion for adjournment.